Good afternoon, I would like to call the May meeting of the City Planning Commission to order. I will call on Commissioner Crekmore for the invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you today to ask for your guidance, wisdom, and support. As we begin this meeting, we ask that you will be in our midst. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to continue to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of our community. Fill us with your grace to make appropriate decisions that will affect our city. Help us to be able to review the matters at hand in a reasonable and thoughtful way. Let us continue to give thanks for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us, and guide each one of us so that we can make fruitful contributions as we work for the city to accomplish our goals this day. Amen.
Thank you. Mr. Wine, would you call a roll, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Bauer?
Here.
Commissioner Crekmore?
Here.
Commissioner Eberwin?
Here.
Commissioner Edwards?
Here.
Commissioner Goodman?
Here.
Commissioner Hicks?
Here.
Vice Chairman Staler?
Here.
And Chairman Singleton?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a form.
Okay, thank you. Are there any corrections to the minutes from the April 18th work session minutes? If not, they will stand as presented. Do any corrections to the minutes from the commission meeting on the 18th? They too will be standing as presented. This afternoon, we have four items on our public hearing agenda. Public hearings are for 30 minutes, 10 minutes for the proponents, 15 minutes for the opponents, and five minutes for rebuttals. This meeting is videotaped and televised for public viewing. The first item on our agenda this afternoon is conditional use permit request, CUP 2023-010, Sojourn Fermentory. Mr. Wine, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Conditional use permit request, CUP 2023-010, Sojourn Fermentory, submitted by Scott Osborne, Sojourn Fermentory, applicant, on behalf of BEC Investors LLC, property owner. In accordance with Sections 31306 and 31406, the Unified Development Ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a bar and nightclub, live entertainment, on property located at 1400 Bridgeport Way, zoning map 12*55*2, parcel A1. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Sleepy Hole Voting Borough, Zoned B2, General Commercial Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Northern Growth Area, Inner Ring Suburban Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to conditional use permit request, CUP 2023-010. Staff Planner Joshua Bateman will present staff's report on this item.
Good afternoon, I'm Josh Bateman, the principal planner for the City of Suffolk, and this afternoon, it is my pleasure to present the proposal from Sojourn for a conditional use permit to establish a bar and nightclub, the live entertainment component of their proposed microbrewery and restaurant on property, excuse me, Zoned B2, General Commercial, located in the Bridgeport Mixed-Use Development on Bridge Road, which is U.S. Route 17. The floor area in which the activity is being proposed will contain a stage for performances by live bands, and adjacent seating area, and the subject parcel, as Mr. Wine noted, is located in Northern Growth Area in the Inner Ring Suburban Land Use District. The location of the subject property can be seen here in the zoning and land use map. It is tax map 12552A1. It is located on Bridge Road across the street from the Winward Lane and Samara Street intersection. To the north of the property is a tributary of Knott's Creek on developed and undeveloped properties, Zoned RLM in B2. To the south are businesses and undeveloped parcels on the opposite side of Bridge Road, Zoned B2. To the east are additional parcels in the Bridgeport Development containing mixed-use buildings and commercial uses on out parcel, Zoned B2. And to the west is a wholesale plant nursery on property, Zoned B2. This illustrative exhibit shows the location in Bridgeport where the Sojourn Fermentory will establish a microbrewery and restaurant. The brewery will occupy 9,248 square feet of floor area. On the ground floor of Building B2 beneath the 3,800 Aquia Lifestyle Apartments situated at the northwest corner of Bridgeport Way and Samara Street. So it's a very central location within the Bridgeport Development, right there at that key intersection in that community. This site plan essentially shows the same thing. The overall site plan, which was approved several years ago, shows the location of the proposed use and the proposed microbrewery restaurant in Building B2 in Bridgeport. The CUP is being requested to allow Sojourn to play live music indoors, bands playing mostly acoustic music, as entertainment for the enjoyment of patrons of the microbrewery and restaurant, which is currently under plan review. The applicant has proposed the following hours during which the brewery and restaurant are open to the public, which are Monday through Thursday, 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., Fridays and Saturdays, 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., excuse me. The applicant notes that exceptions would be needed for special events, like New Year's Eve, when the business closes at and would have live entertainment playing until midnight, such as New Year's Eve, but also other such special events. However, they did not specify in their proposal and their narrative which, how many there would be, so that led to staff's recommendation that I'll provide here in a minute. But staff does recommend aligning the hours of indoor live entertainment with that of the brewery and restaurant to eliminate any potential for confusion. It's always a lot simpler to just align those hours, especially in a development like this, which was designed for this type of business, with the hours of operation that they're going to be operating under anyway. But also putting some limitations on the number of special events, because I could see that getting out of hand without some type of cap. And so I think there needs to be a limit on the number of times they're allowed to be open till midnight during the playing, with the playing of live music. That's that important caveat. So this doesn't necessarily restrict the bar or the restaurant, excuse me, to those hours. It would restrict the live entertainment piece to 12:00 midnight. The floor area being used for outdoor entertainment includes a performance stage, bar, and adjacent seating area, as well as a private event space and indoor beer garden. Staff's recommendation is for approval of the conditional use permit subject to the following conditions. One, that the conditional use permit is granted specifically to establish a bar and nightclub, live entertainment for property located at 1400 Bridgeport Way Suite 103, zoning map 12*55*2, parcel A1, as identified in Exhibit B property map. Two, the bar and nightclub shall be located within the interior area of the business, highlighting the attached floor plan attached here to as Exhibit C. And three, the hours of operation of the proposed bar and nightclub shall be Monday through Thursday, 12:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Friday and Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., provided that the activity shall be permitted to continue until 12:00 a.m. during special events, not to exceed, excuse me, six such special events per calendar year. And this third condition was amended between the condition as originally appeared in your staff reports that were provided to you a week ago. It was amended for clarity to make it clear that that only applies to special events during which live entertainment, that is, the playing of live music, will be conducted. If commissioners have any questions of staff, please feel free to ask them of me after following the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bateman. I will now open the public hearing. Who would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request?
Chairman Commissioners, my name is Thomas Ryan, 119 Suffolk Meadows Boulevard. I'm in full support of this CUP. I love live music, and I've been known to visit a bar once or twice, so I think it's a great thing, especially where it's located. I just had two questions that maybe you can clarify for me. One was, how and were the residents that live upstairs particularly notified of this, and were they provided the opportunity to provide feedback? Which goes to my second question. In the narrative, it notes 100 decibels would be the maximum of sound. And I thought, from another situation I was involved with here, was 50 decibels was the maximum within a certain distance. And I'm just curious, because I know this came up a couple of months ago with the New Realm Brewery over in Harborview area, and I'd hate for us to come back at another later date, because either residents weren't allowed to, you know, participate in their feedback, and two, whether the 100 decibels was appropriate or accurate, I'm not sure. So if I could get those two questions answered, I'd really appreciate it. But I'm in full support of this. I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Anyone else to speak in favor of this request? Is anyone to speak in opposition? Here are nine. Mr. Ryan, the questions, we don't answer questions from this podium, and staff will address this when we close the public hearing, if they can. So we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions? Comments? Or motion?
I have one question, just for clarification. I know, but I don't know if everyone knows what we call live music. So if you could, is that DJ, I can't think of your name?
Josh.
Josh. Is that DJ? Is that band? Is that piped in? What is determined live?
I may recall from our lengthy discussion on the ordinance committee many months ago that it's really a quirk of the city's UDO that, you know, something like this is technically defined as a nightclub. Now, I've been to a few breweries in my time that played live music. I've never been during the night, but I've gone many times during the day. But that's how our UDO actually classifies it as a nightclub. And the playing of live entertainment in the definition of that is not defined, but I would imagine it would include, certainly, live bands as exist here. Whether it would include things like disc jockeys or something like that, I don't know. But this applicant isn't requesting that. They've been pretty clear that the atmosphere that they're trying to create is one of live bands for the enjoyment of guests. They want the music to get too loud either. And in response to the question about the 100 decibels, this was one of the questions that came up at Land Use Committee. So the 100 decibels that they talk about in their narrative is the reading within the restaurant itself. These buildings, these mixed-use buildings are desired with fire separation and other things between floors, especially between that first floor that has commercial uses, things like restaurants and kitchens, and the dwelling units that are located on the higher stories. So they're designed to provide that separation. And when we talked about it with the building official at the Land Use Committee, they indicated there should be no issues with that. So they didn't get into depth with that, but I would imagine that the readings will be well below the decibel levels in our performance standards. The buildings, as I said, were actually designed with this purpose. And this development, this is a good, and this use is a particularly good anchor for this Bridgeport Mixed-Use Development.
Any more questions, Mr. Bateman still at the podium?
Yes, I had a question, and I know that you did say specifically that the live entertainment is going to be indoors. I did go out to the site today, and I'm definitely in favor of it. I'm more of a coffee shop kind of gal than a bar kind of gal, but it's a great space. The contractor did take me outside and showed me, I think we discussed earlier, the drop-down, like, place where, that's outside, that is kind of set aside, open space, and he was like, you know, they've got the option for entertainment here, just so I feel confident that's not on the table as being used for live entertainment, or possibly down the road, or...
We gave the applicant the opportunity to apply for a conditional use permit for any entertainment that they may have indoors or outdoors. I think there was some still question, and Kevin, you might be able to provide clarification, but I think there was some still question about whether they were going to use, lease that outdoor space, or use that outdoor space for that purpose at the time of application. So the applicant opted not to include that at that time. So could there be an additional conditional use permit coming forward for the outdoor beer garden and the outdoor entertainment? It is possible. I don't really, I haven't, I've spoken with the applicant a limited number of times, mostly by email, and so I just don't know what their plans are.
And thanks, Josh. I can elaborate on that a little bit. So the applicant, our application you have before you today is limited to the indoor activities of the Sojourn Fermentory as proposed. The larger Bridgeport community, Mixed-Use Development, has not one but two, I believe, outdoor spaces available to it. One, I think, is under construction as a part of the next phase. But there is an existing kind of stage area at a plaza right outside of the Sojourn area. This application does not include that. My understanding is the developer, the property owner out there, has had events previously through a special event permit that they worked with our Parks and Recreation Department on, but they are aware that moving forward, they will also need a conditional use permit for live entertainment. So that is on their radar. They opted to, the applicant in this case opted to move forward on theirs, and then the larger developer will, we look forward to moving forward with theirs down the road.
And it may be that, you know, the peculiar thing about the definition of nightclub in our ordinance is that involves also the consumption of alcoholic beverages. So it may have been that the special event permit was for events that may or may not have included, and I don't know the answer to that, but they will need, as Kevin noted, a conditional use permit for outdoor nightclub live entertainment activity.
Thanks for clarifying.
No problem.
Mr. Edwards?
Can you refresh my memory? Has Condition 3, I guess the last part of it, about the six events? How was that calculated?
It would be per calendar year.
So...
January 1st to December 31st, December 31st.
And how do you regulate the six? I'm just curious.
What's that?
I mean, they can do no more than six, right?
Well, they would be allowed to have live music until midnight, yes.
On six days?
A maximum of six such events, yes.
And how is that enforced? I'm just curious.
It would be enforced by our zoning department on a complaint basis.
Up to six? And second question is, has this standard, let me refresh my memory, has this standard been used on previous applications?
Not to my knowledge, but I'm kind of new to this.
I can elaborate there. That provision has not necessarily been utilized. We're always looking for ways to refine and better our conditions associated with these types of uses. And as we know, specifically, these bars and nightclubs, as we define them, have been a topic of debate and concern on what the appropriate hours are. We understand that, and generally, the rule of thumb is the applicant will provide us with their anticipated hours of operation that the use will be utilized. And we've tried to hold them to that. Generally downtown, we see 11:00 p.m. on weeknights, midnight on the weekends. In the north area of the city, we don't have as many users up there. New Realm and Blue Point, they provided us with some hours that we were comfortable with, so we conditioned them appropriately. Another one, Decoys Restaurant up there, they have live entertainment. I believe that is 9:00 p.m. on the weekdays, 10:00 p.m. on the weekends, so a little more restrictive. So we see operations operating at different types of hours there. And I think, I want to say it was New Realm was the first time we kind of saw this caveat of, well, there are certain events throughout the year that we would like to accommodate up until midnight, New Year's being a really good example. So we, listening to that, we wanted to incorporate or expand upon that condition to say, hey, there are certain nights, we understand that you may want to operate until then. And we didn't want to be arbitrary with it. We thought six was a good enough number to capture those types of events outside of potentially New Year's, by also limiting it in a manner that it's not midnight every night. So that's kind of how we landed on that.
Yeah, and if I can just briefly elaborate, I do have experience with these microbreweries in previous places where I've worked, and there was a conditional use permit that was approved in a town that I used to work in for a microbrewery similar to this, that over time, after they got a conditional use permit approval, decided to add live entertainment to their business, because it draws the people in, it keeps the people sitting down and happy, and listening to music, and trying out different beers. And it would have been nice if they had imposed some kind of limit on special events, because they were, so the number six doesn't just get necessarily pulled out of a hat. I think it's a very reasonable limit. And the reason I say that is because if we had had some kind of limit on that in Lovitzville when we had the microbrewery there, it probably would have tamped down on citizen complaints. Now, totally different situation there, not in a mixed-use building, just a completely different setting. You know, the folks that are renting these apartments, or buying these units, or whatever the case may be, you know, they go into that knowing that the first floor is occupied by these types of uses. So it's a lifestyle choice, it's a desire to be close to where things are happening, and to be able to walk to the microbrewery and walk home, hopefully.
Make sure I understand, though. Is it a possibility that there's going to be a standard that's going to be used going forward, or is this a one-time thing?
I think it could work as a standard if the planning commission felt like it made sense, and if it works. A lot of times, these breweries will do things like veterans appreciation events and stuff like that, whether on July 4th or Memorial Day, that's a good example of one. And there's an expectation that it's going to last longer than till 9:00 p.m. or till 10:00 p.m. But we do want to put some limitation on it. Eventually, folks got to get sleep, so...
And I'll elaborate on that point briefly, but I think it's incumbent upon our professional planning staff to kind of utilize their professional judgment when it comes to applying that. One of the more unique parts of the Bridgeport community is, one, it's a mixed-use development, but it's in the north end of the city. Mixed-use developments are envisioned to work like many downtowns, if you will. So there's truly a collection of office, residential, there's a car wash there, of convenience store. There's a lot of uses living together. However, you go down Knott's Creek Lane, you're in single-family residential territory. That's within earshot. You're also not far from Harborview, across the creek, also an earshot. So we want to be cognizant of that. Downtown, I think, is a little different, where you have a concentration in the downtown core of non-residential uses, and in some residential uses that work harmoniously. But yeah, we want to be cognizant to some of the single-family established residential uses up there as well. That's probably why we elected to hold them to the hours they approached us with, and not extend it to midnight.
And it's an indoor use, that's the other thing. It's indoor music. If they were applying for a conditional use permit for outdoor space, I'm not sure midnight would make a whole lot of sense. So we're really cognizant of the fact that this is going to be done completely indoors in a building that we expect to be fairly soundproofed, in a development that was intended and designed, literally, for this type of business. So I think the hours of operation, I mean, we constantly need to be looking at performance and how these uses are performing. If there are problems that our zoning department is bringing to our attention as planning staff, we need to listen to that, and we need to be prepared to change our recommendations as conditions warrant. But I think this, I think it's a liberal sort of application of it, you know, it could have held them to two or four, but I think six is reasonable and should incorporate, and we've had no pushback from this applicant on that recommendation.
Thank you. I thought you were coming with another one. Commissioners, I think we're finished with the questions.
Chair.
Comments or a motion?
Could I make a motion that we approve CUP 2023-010 with the three conditions?
Got a motion?
Second. And should note one caveat there. You do have a revised set of conditions in front of you at the dais. I believe Josh noted this, but a very small change to Condition 3, as it relates to, just a very minor language change, let me see, let me make sure I captured correctly.
Eliminated hosted by the applicant.
Yes, so events hosted by the applicant had been removed and revised to just events, I believe. And then, small change to indicate that there shall be no, not exceed the six special events per year, "special" was inserted there.
Kevin, I noticed that it's 12:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Is that, should that be p.m. for Monday through Thursday for the hours of operation?
Ha, yes, it should.
It should be. So we can incorporate that change as well. So as such, it would be appropriate to move for approval as amended.
Yes.
Any more discussion on the motion?
I think we need a second.
We had a couple of seconds.
After it was revised?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. We have the second second, okay. Mr. Director, I'll make sure I've understood it, and thinking about these going forward, and just thinking about this application, let's just deal with this application here. For the lack of outdoor use is one of the things we have to take into consideration. And also, its geographic location in the city is one of the things we have to take into consideration with this application. I want to make sure I understand that.
With all applications.
All right, okay.
And I think the other part of it is a mixed-use development. Other question, discussion? Mr. Wine, would you call for a vote?
Commissioner Bauer?
Can you change my machine over?
Is your machine on?
I don't have mine.
Oh, sorry, what we're going to do, I forgot to tell you. We're going to do roll call votes today, because the machine, the state of the city has, everyone scattered all about, so they were not able to get that up and running. So I'm going to get a roll call. I should have let you on to that previously. All right, Commissioner Bauer? If you're voting for approval, yes would be appropriate.
Yes.
Commissioner Crekmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
No.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Staler?
Yes.
And Chairman Singleton.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of seven to one.
I make a note to the applicants, congratulations. We have a motion from this body going forward to the City Council on June 21st with a motion for approval. Thank you. Okay, next item...
Oh, Mr. Chair, I think Mr. Ryan, who asked about whether the people up over the brewery were notified, and I did see, I was sitting there for dinner just on Sunday, and there was a sign, so yes.
The next item on our agenda is the Ordinance Text Amendment, OTA 2023-002. Mr. Wine, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Ordinance Text Amendment, OTA 2023-002. This is initiated by the City of Suffolk for amendments to the Code of the City of Suffolk, Chapter 31, Unified Development Ordinance, Article 8, Nonconforming Uses, Section 31 801, Intent of the Code of the City of Suffolk, Virginia. The purpose of the text amendment is to update and refine the Code of the City of Suffolk, Chapter 31, Unified Development Ordinance. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and a recommendation to City Council relating to Ordinance Text Amendment, OTA 2023-002. Our zoning administrator, Jennifer Cobb, will present staff's report on this item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Jennifer Cobb, the zoning administrator for the City of Suffolk, and this will just be a brief overview of the changes that we have made. So recently, the city has seen an influx in the applications that have come before us for improvements to nonconforming structures. So currently, the way that ordinance states is anything that is making more of an improvement, more than 50% would require a conditional use permit and approval from City Council to be able to make those repairs. So the way that we have captured this change is we've made the word, added the word "structurally" into the first section, which then incorporates not allowing them to increase the nonconforming size of the structure, so it has to stay within the same footprint. It can't go vertical either, it has to stay within the same size. So we're not increasing or allowing them to increase the nonconformity. So we're not increasing or allowing them to increase the nonconformity. So we took some of the language that we already had in the ordinance and kind of cut and pasted it to work it together where we eliminated the conditional use permit for that 50% of replacement. It's also going to streamline the process for the applicants so they can go ahead and get in and make the repairs necessary without prolonging it and causing further deterioration of the structure. So you guys all had this in your staff reports. And I'm available for any questions that you guys may have.
Thank you, Ms. Cobb. I will now open the public hearing. I don't think Ms. Cobb will have any other comments to make on this. But any other comments on this? Here are none. Are there any opposition to this? Here are none. I will now close the public hearing. Don't have any rebuttal. Commissioners, questions, comments, or a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just make a comment that the ordinance committee did approve this and recommends it to the commission.
Any comments? Ain't no motion?
That's it. Well, I'll be glad to make a motion for the approval of OTA 2023-002.
Second from Commissioner Hicks. Any discussion of the motion? None. Mr. Wyer, be you call the roll.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Bauer?
Yes.
Commissioner Creekmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwine?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Staler?
Yes.
And Chairman Singleton.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
And this ordinance text amendment will go to City Council on June 21st with the recommendation for approval also. Next item on our agenda is ordinance text amendments OTA 2023-004. Mr. Wyer, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. This ordinance text amendment OTA 2023-004, initiated by the City of Suffolk for amendments to the Code of the City of Suffolk, Chapter 31 Unified Development Ordinance, UDO. Article 4 Zoning, Section 31 402 Establishment of Zoning Districts, Section 31 404 Zoning Map, Table 404-1. Section 31 408 N2 Specific FRRD District Criteria Approval Process, Section 31 413 Historic Conservation Overlay Districts, HC. Section 31 420E Location and Design, and Section 31 420F Streets and Alley's. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to ordinance text amendment OTA 2023-004. Mr. Keith Kennedy will present a staff's report on this item, which is largely related to our HLC design guideline updates and ordinance text amendments that would be necessitated by the adoption of those guidelines.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. This is a follow-up to the discussion we had at your work session last month. And as Mr. Wyne indicated, items C and D are closely related, so I'm going to summarize those in a single presentation. But this item will require, I believe, two separate public hearings and two separate votes. So again, as a follow-up, I will keep my presentation brief this afternoon and just share a couple of highlights from the previous session, a little bit of background to refresh your memory and update you on a couple of new dates that have popped up since the last presentation. Again, we acknowledge that this is a pretty unique part of the zoning ordinance where we work closely with national standards and maintain our program as a certified local government under state and federal guidelines and also rely pretty heavily on outside consultants with the unique kind of expertise that's needed to update and manage this program. That includes a little more coordination on our part as we go through this kind of change, working at the state level, working very closely in this particular case with property owners that find themselves in the district as well as the numerous businesses that operate up and down Maine and Washington in particular, as well as coordination with property maintenance and zoning staff and the attorney's office. We did have, and we talked about this in April, pretty clear direction in terms of city policy, things that we wanted to achieve with this proposal. Looked to the downtown master plan for some specific recommendations, a desire to get the information out to the general public about being in the district, as well as sort of acknowledging that investment in property really is the key to historic preservation and wanting to do our best to promote that kind of investment. These are the recommendations out of the downtown master plan, looking for ways to streamline the overall procedure, same results, but can we get there a little faster and with a little less investment of time and money? Find some ways, if they're possible, to take actions at a staff level that doesn't require action by the Historic Landmarks Commission. Look particularly at something that's a pretty big part of this program, replacement materials, alternative materials, are there ways to streamline that process as well? And again, when we say investment, it's everything, really, from property maintenance to rehabilitation of existing structures, but also we see a fair amount of new construction in this district. So we look at investment in all those ways. Again, very quickly, what is included in the text amendment? Amendment, we talked a lot last month about the guidelines. You'll see a lot of what we call housekeeping amendments, making sure language is used consistently throughout the ordinance. And a couple of notable substantive amendments, I mentioned those, making it clear that administrative approvals are available in certain places. Replacement windows is the one that we found we could make a lot of progress on. We've cut back on our regulation of color, particularly changes in color versus painting a brick building a color. We still regulate those types of activities. And also found some ways to match up this overlay district requirement for signs with what's in the base district, making sure we're sending out one message and requiring the same thing in both sections of the ordinance. So ways to, we think, make this program operate better without, again, compromising the objectives of what we're trying to do here. This is our review and approval process. We already got the support from Department of Historic Resources. We actually got the support of the Landmarks Commission last week at their meeting on May 11th. And of course, a couple of stops with the planning commission, including a recommendation for action today. We've also scheduled our work session with City Council that will be tomorrow afternoon, putting us in a position for recommending adoption at Council's June 21st meeting. So that's where we are in the overall process. And again, staff are recommending approval of the resolution, which would move forward the historic district guidelines and recommending approval of OTA 2023-004. So that's my formal comments this afternoon. I'll stand by for any questions or comments.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. I will now open the public hearing on ordinance text amendment OTA 2023-004. Are there any additional comments to be made from the audience?
Good afternoon. Thomas Ryan, 119 Suffolk Meadows Boulevard, Suffolk, Virginia. Actually, I've been following this. I did watch your work session from last month, and it was, Keith, thank you, it was very detailed, went on for a while. I know you had to put aside some of the other work that you were going to discuss at that meeting to go over this. I found it very interesting, and I think it's a great idea. I think as, and you've noted this yourselves many times, as things change, as we've changed as society, materials have gotten better, ways to do things have gotten better, and I think it's important that we do whatever we can to revitalize downtown and the historic district but keep the essence of it. I know that there's some probably more legalese in there that I'm not aware of in terms of commissions and landmark commissions and different things and funding, but just in the general sense of things, I would love to see downtown Suffolk in the historic area revitalized. A lot of the houses, when my wife and I come downtown and we drive through the area, we just, we look at some of the houses that are just so gorgeous and some of the opportunities that exist to make a lot of others in that manner. So I think it's a great idea. I think that anything you can do to move this along would be very much in the best interests of the citizens of Suffolk and the city, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Is there any other comments in favor of this request? Or any opposition to this request? Here are none. I will now close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments, or motion? And this is for the 2023-004 only.
Mr. Chairman, make sure I understand. So this vote is for the actual overlay district?
This is for the ordinance text amendments necessitated by changes to the guidelines to kind of precede the guidelines to pave the way for their adoption. Does that make sense? No, it doesn't?
Help me out.
So we have the overlay. It is. It's specific to the overlay, the historic district overlay, which is kind of a smaller microcosm of the downtown area, to include the downtown core and some of the residential neighborhoods immediately adjacent. If I'm not mistaken, there are two areas outside of downtown that do fall under the historic district as well. One of those is Glebe Church. I'm forgetting the other one. But they are in our local historic district, and as a part of that, they have guidelines associated with what you can and can't do on the exterior appearance of those structures. They require administrative review by staff and/or potentially review by the Historic Landmarks Commission. And we are making some modifications to our guidelines, wanting to make them more simple, but to allow for some alternative materials to be considered as well. And within the UDO, there are multiple references to those guidelines throughout, and that is what the ordinance text amendment will incorporate.
So this is more of the technical UDO changing of language?
Yes.
And then we'll get to the second.
Then we'll get to the.
Well, this is getting to what the UDO is going to say about this.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Refine those references and sometimes contradictions within the UDO.
Yeah. Regardless, we're going to have something in the UDO about this. We're just cleaning up the language in the UDO.
Yes.
All right. That's fair. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I neglected to mention, I believe there's a revised resolution in front of you as well. I believe there was a last-minute change to that text. Is that right, Katina? Okay. So I think you've got a revised resolution in front of you on this as well.
Do you elaborate on the changes from the other one that's in the?
Yes, I think it was a change from Historic Landmarks Commission to Planning Commission in the title of the resolution.
Say that again, please.
I believe it was a change in the title of the resolution from Historic Landmarks Commission to Planning Commission. So probably the second or third line in the revised resolution. Okay.
Question for Keith. Could you touch on the change in historic and cultural district to historic, like the renaming of that?
It was one of those inconsistencies that I don't think I can explain. I think it was called different things in the ordinance and perhaps other city code as well. So we went back and made everything consistent. It was just to make sure we were using the term that the UDO was using and other documents were using so that we were consistently defining both the district and the landmarks commission consistently. So you see a lot of those changes in there.
I did. I just didn't know if there was like a meaning to it or if it was just.
Just to get it consistent throughout the documents.
Just for consistency, or just for clarification, rather, the resolution, this amended resolution goes with the next one, not this one. It goes with the next ordinance, not with this one.
Okay. Yes, that's correct.
Thanks, Commissioner. I was wondering why I couldn't find it. Okay. So we have a need for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval OTA 2023-004.
Second.
Got a second from Commissioner Hicks. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion in the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to thank the city staff for the tremendous amount of time that they spent on this particular project. And I think if we looked at the timeline for going through all of the different agencies and looking at this, I know I attended a public meeting some time back, maybe two, three years ago, where this was being discussed here in these chambers, and there was a lot of questions, mostly dealing with the materials, et cetera, and the approval process. So I congratulate the city staff on doing a fabulous job on bringing this up to us and the presentation that you made to us during our work session last month. So that's all.
Time to call for the vote, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Bauer?
Yes.
Commissioner Creekmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwine?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks? Vice Chairman Staler?
Yes.
And Chairman Singleton.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, that motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Go to the City Council on June 21st also.
Yes, sir.
The next item on our public hearing today is the Suffolk Historic District Guidelines, and Mr. Kennedy has covered that for us now. And if there's any question, we'll hold until I open and close the public hearing. I will now open the public hearing on the Suffolk Historic District Guidelines. Is anyone here in favor of this request?
I do believe I do have to read that caption.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Prior to the public. So this is for the Suffolk Historic District Guidelines prepared by the Suffolk Historic Landmarks Commission, in which they propose revisions to the historic district guidelines which implement Section 31 413 Historic Conservation Overlay District to the Unified Development Ordinance and which are used by the commission as the criteria for issuing a certificate of appropriateness. The guidelines provide a foundation for ensuring that buildings, structures, and signs, whether rehabilitation, revitalization, or new construction are architecturally compatible with the historic landmark buildings and structures within the historic district. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to these amendments to the Suffolk Historic District Guidelines.
And I will reopen the public hearing after hearing that read. Is anyone in favor? Is there anyone in the audience in opposition? Commissioners, questions, comments, or a motion? And the motion will include the new resolution, the amended resolution.
The amended resolution needs to be amended a little bit further. It has in the be it resolved clause, it still references Historic Landmarks Commission.
Got that, Mr. Wyer?
All right. Which whereas clause was that?
Nowhere.
Before clause. Okay. Nowherefore. Okay. There we go.
And in the findings.
That should be replaced by the planning commission.
Yes. This is why we have attorneys. This is why we have attorneys.
Staler, since you understand all this, you want to make that motion?
Our chairman just made a vast mistake in saying that, but anyway. I'm trying to figure out exactly how to make this, this motion. I move that the planning commission approve that a resolution to present a report and recommendation to city council relating to the amendments to the Suffolk Historic District Guidelines be approved.
As amended.
As amended.
Second. You got a second?
This is Staler and Eberwin. All right.
Thank you, Mrs. Staler and Mr. Eberwin.
We'll figure this out.
Okay. Any discussion in the motion?
That's what I need, one comment. I really do want to thank the staff, all their hard work. I read over it a couple of times. I watched our discussion over it a couple of times. I've thought about it a whole lot of times. And I really want to appreciate the work of the staff of the Historic Landmark Commission. Is that correct? Yeah. They didn't change that name or anything. Okay. And I appreciate it. I, what I will say is this, I support all of the what in the guidelines, I just do not support the where. And I just want to make that clear.
Any other comments?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Bauer?
Yes.
Commissioner Creavemore?
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
No.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks? Commissioner Singleton?
Yes.
And Vice Chairman Staler?
Yes.
All right. The motion is approved by a vote of seven to one.
That closed our public hearings for today. And we'll move now to old business. I'm not sure if we, I don't think we have any, any old business. And under the new business, item A is the revised planning commission bylaws. And Mr. Wyman, could you elaborate on that, please?
Yes, sir. So there are times of the year that, that there may be conflicts outside of our control with you all's meeting. The one I shared with you last month relates to the Virginia Planning Conference, which has always held that third week of July, in which we'd like to take a slew of staff as well as two planning commissioners with us in a pretty informative setting that could allow us all to hopefully be a little better at what we do. So right now, the provisions within your bylaws are pretty specific. You can always cancel a meeting, but there's not a lot of leeway for rescheduling a meeting unless there's a conflict with a holiday. So as such, I will not be presenting this for your consideration today. I'm presenting it to all to review so you can motion to consider it at your meeting next month. But you do have within your packet a modification to your procedures that would read, "Regular meetings of the commission shall be held on the third Tuesday of each month at 2:00 PM in the municipal building unless otherwise ordered by the commission." That is new language, the unless ordered, otherwise ordered by the commission. "If the regular meeting day should be a legal holiday, the meeting shall be held at the same time and place on the first succeeding day, not a holiday." And that's language straight out of your current ordinance, our current bylaws. So that's, that's really it in a nutshell. This would allow you to modify the date at your meeting preceding that modified date, should you be so inclined. So I'm presenting that as food for thought, and at this time, it would be appropriate if you were so inclined to motion to formally consider that amendment to your bylaws at your meeting in June.
I'm looking for a motion to, after reviewing the bylaws, to have this, the changes in our June meeting on the agenda. Got a commission? Go ahead.
Second.
Okay. Go ahead. Any discussion in the motion?
Just eager to second somebody today.
No discussion in motion, Mr. Wyman, you call for a vote, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Bauer?
Yes.
Commissioner Creavemore?
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Staler?
Yes.
And Chairman Singleton?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
At our June meeting, we will make a motion, we'll deal with this and make a decision for our July meeting. The next item on our new business is a staff report, affordable housing. Mr. Wyman, you going to make that?
I will. I'll go get the clicker. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Affordable housing is something that we had on our work session agenda last month, but we had such a fruitful discussion on the HLC district guideline update, which has been a long process, and we thank you all for, for your consideration today. That is, a lot of blood, sweat, and tears went into that. And we also talked about solar as well, which is a hot topic throughout the city, a for important discussion. So we elected to move affordable housing to a staff report today, and I'm going to kind of walk you through some of the considerations. This is the report that I provided, or the presentation I provided, rather, to city council at their retreat back in early April. So it's not that long ago. But I, I think there are some misnomers as it relates to affordable housing and what it actually is. It's actually heavily regulated, not necessarily by the city, but by the Department of Housing and Urban Development at the federal level. So it is very clear what affordable housing is in the city of Suffolk and really the Hampton Roads metro area and more broadly. So, so we can't, you know, mix it up with things that don't qualify as that. And there are also different tiers of what is affordable. We have low income, we have very low income, and then extremely low income. There are a variety of ways that developers can offer affordable products, and I'm going to touch on some of those. And then try to leave you with some, some more broad questions as it relates to the complexity of incorporating some more development-friendly affordable housing regulations in our UDO. It is an overarching theme within our comprehensive plan to encourage and to increase the amount of affordable housing available within the city of Suffolk. And that's something that we really want to achieve at the staff level. So I'll talk about some of those today, and feel free to chime in along the way and ask questions, should you have any, as it relates to this information. But I think the, the first most important part of this conversation is what is affordable. And like I said, that's identified and defined annually by HUD. And it's based upon the median family income for your metropolitan statistical area. So we fall in the Virginia Beach, Newport News, Norfolk, MSA, the Hampton Roads metropolitan area. And within that area for a family of four, so it also depends on your household size. I elected family of four. In Hampton Roads, that median income is $93,500, probably higher, higher than one would think. So to identify as low income, to qualify as a low-income family in the city of Suffolk in the Hampton Roads metro area, you would make 80% of that median household income. So affordable isn't necessarily as affordable as we think. I, I think that's an important caveat. So you would be making $74,000, $74,800 annually with a family, a family of four in the Hampton Roads market to qualify as low income. Very low income takes that one step further. At that point, you're making 50% of the median metro income, and that puts you at $46,750. You could take that one step further and get to 30% of the median income for the Hampton Roads area. I don't have that figure up there, but that is what qualifies as extremely low income. And generally, at that point, you're working with the Suffolk Redevelopment Housing Authority through programs that they have because they're qualifications for their Section 8 voucher. So this is, ooh, I should have enlarged this. I apologize. My eyes are not nearly as good as they used to be. So when you're, there are a variety of programs available. And, and what we see more often than not, and I'm just kind of elaborating on that point so it makes a little more sense. But for instance, the rezoning that you all recently considered in Hill Point was for low-income development. That was, the reason it qualified as low income is because it was being built with what's called low-income housing tax credits. That's a federal program. It's administered on the state level by VHDA, the Virginia Housing Development Authority. And what makes it affordable is that those units will be affordable to, most of them will be affordable, if not all of them, to at least those who qualifies low income, 80%. Generally, they're opened up to the 50% and the 30% as well. But once you get to that 30% level, extremely low income, that is when you can, that is when your best option to achieve affordable housing, at least in the city of Suffolk, lies with the Suffolk Redevelopment Housing Authority. Because they have very strict income limits for their, for their Section 8 voucher, a Section 8 voucher program, which they administer for the city of Suffolk. So in fact, I believe 80% of applicants have to be at least, have to meet that 30% threshold with Suffolk Redevelopment Housing. I'm going to touch on that in a moment. And only about 20% are open to those making no more than 40% of the median income. So, so the, the folks who are in the most significant need of affordable housing tend to find it working through those programs, completely separate program. So what makes housing affordable? Like I said, HUD annually establishes fair market rates, which is the average monthly cost of affordable rents. And for the city of Suffolk, a one-bedroom, that, that would be affordable, clocks in at about $1,100 a month. That increases to about 13. Once again, I can't see, and the glare off these screens are not great. The three-bedroom gets close to about $1,900. So once again, it's all relative on, on what affordable is. It's defined, but it's, it's a lot higher than what we would think. The amount a recipient pays is based upon their income. Like I said, of folks participating in the Section 8 voucher program must pay a minimum of 30% of monthly income towards housing and utilities. Generally, the rest of that is subsidized through that voucher that their landlord would accept. So as I noted, the comprehensive plan speaks to affordable housing in a lot of ways. We have an entire chapter in the comprehensive plan dedicated to housing, of which increasing the supply of affordable housing is a key principle and theme. Specifically, we have five policy actions dedicated solely to increasing the supply of decent affordable housing products in the city. And as I noted, Chapter 6 of the plan speaks to housing, of which the increasing the affordable housing stock in the city is 100% the dominant theme. So this, this is straight out of the city's comprehensive plan. I'm not going to read it all to you, but we do have an affordable dwelling unit ordinance now. We do, we have an entire section in Article 4 related to zoning in the city. In a nutshell, what it does, it allows for a potential 30% density bonus for folks who qualify. But straight out of the comp plan, to date, this ordinance has not been successful. And there are a variety of reasons for that. I'm going to touch on those in a moment. But it's confusing. It doesn't incentivize enough. And ultimately, folks building affordable housing in the city of Suffolk, not named the Suffolk Redevelopment and Housing Authority, need the numbers to work on a very competitive application in which they're competing with localities outside of Suffolk. So we're looking at ways to identify mechanisms to strengthen those applications so they score higher. So those low-income housing tax credits are granted in the city of Suffolk and not in competing localities. So as I noted, the current ordinance does allow for a bonus of up to 30% for affordable dwelling units. Affordable per our definition out of the Unified Development Ordinance, similar to what I just shared with you all, very low-income housing, that's the 50%, low-income housing or moderate-income housing. And moderate really doesn't play into it much. It's just kind of a legacy notation in our Unified Development Ordinance because I believe anything under the median qualifies as moderate-income housing. But low-income housing tax credit developments are strict in the fact that they, they must be available to low-income residents and, and below. So it's applicable to almost any development, provided that a number of units are earmarked for affordable dwelling units. City council must consult with the Suffolk Redevelopment Housing Authority to establish a purchase and rental rates, and that's part of it. You have the administration of this program, which kind of sits with three different entities, which makes it even more confusing. And we talked about this in the committee on ordinances. But that is certainly a part of it. Wow, I did a really bad job of making sure this was large enough to see. I'm going to go back this way. So when it comes to that bonus density, that 30%, the density bonus may be approved at the time of rezoning or CUP, which, which you all in city council see. Or it can be done administratively at the time of development if neither a rezoning or CUP is required. Applications are afforded expedited review of no longer than 280 days. And there are phasing requirements. Phasing requirements for a density bonus program like this is really important to ensure that market rate units aren't constructed at the onset and the affordable dwelling units are never realized. So we want to make sure that across the development phasing, at least a portion of those, a significant portion of the units that are constructed, serve, serve the low-income residents of the city of Suffolk and, and meet that threshold for affordability.
A quick question?
Of course.
That sounds like a blanketed density bonus. Are you separating out developments that are going to be strictly rentals or for, for sale or?
Traditionally, in the city of Suffolk, it has been for rental products. So multifamily is where we see it. We partnered, there was a public-private partnership for the redevelopment of Fairgrounds area in the city of Suffolk, which were for purchase products. So they're not, it's not mutually exclusive to one type of ownership or the other.
30% of earlier, the density bonus, is that 30% of the overall that particular project?
Yes, it is. So for instance, if the max density you could get on a property as it's currently zoned, let's say the, it's zoned RU, you're allowed 10.9 units per acre. So you would basically realize an additional three-ish units per acre under that density bonus calculation for, for the entire site. So whatever that acreage may be. So the current ordinance is, is not without its limitations and issues. One, the calculation's confusing, we touched on that. Several agencies are involved, one being city council, the other being Suffolk Redevelopment Housing Authority and planning staff as well. So that being the city involvement. And as such, there's no real lead to it, and that's something that we'd like to consolidate. And we're certainly thinking about. So we have met with some stakeholders in this process. Particularly, we've met with some folks who do this for a living. It is a niche type of development. of development because it's heavily regulated. The folks who presented the Hillpoint rezoning, I think, spoke to some of those niches, I guess, of this type of development. But they noted that they needed zoned land, and that's really important because if you're going through the, in order to file an application for low-income housing tax credit developments within the Commonwealth of Virginia, the, the land needs to be zoned. They need to have some guarantees that you're going to be able to develop it for what you wish to develop it for. So they're not really in the arena of competing against market rate developers through the zoned land process because their margins are much thinner. A waiver of some of the expensive fees, we always come back in the city of Suffolk to water and sewer tap fees. They are certainly a detriment for affordable housing. Once again, this all comes back to, to the margins. Adequate public facilities. We saw this firsthand with the Hillpoint case where it was a limitation on their end to voluntarily proffer the amount that we would normally require as it relates to impacts to the school system. They ended up voluntarily proffering a quarter of that amount. That would be, that would normally be, that the city would require. And as such, staff recommended development of that, or denial of that application. Ultimately, it was approved. Tax abatement. So, some sort of abatement of tax, usually on a number of years, five, 10 years, what have you. We have something similar downtown now, but if they were able to utilize some sort of pre, pre-development tax rate on the property, that would save the developer a substantial amount of money along the long run. Low-interest loans programs, that would be beneficial to them. Expedited review is always helpful. That's not just for low-income housing tax credit developers, mind you. I hear that all day, every day. And then the local cost share for right-of-way and utilities. Because we, we do have a great Unified Development Ordinance as it come, as it relates to site development in the city, and the onus to commit to compliance with our current standards falls on the developer at the time of development.
A question about, that made me think after we, in the Hillpoint, was, so the adequate public facilities, schools is always a big one.
Mm-hmm.
Going out on a limb here, do 55 and older, age-restricted communities, can they ever be like a voucher-type community?
There are some age-restricted communities that are built with low-income housing tax credits. One in the city of Suffolk is Reed's Landing, off of, not far from Elephants Fork Elementary, right off of Godwin. That's a relatively new development, but that is an age-restricted development that was built with low-income housing tax credits.
I just figured that might be a way around one of the struggles they have.
It is, yeah. All right. And I should note, we, we met with multiple developers who participate in, in this process, one being the Lawson Companies out of Virginia Beach, another being a developer we had worked with, with interest in developing in Suffolk specifically. And if I'm not mistaken, his group is moving forward with a, a low-income housing tax credit project at 1280 Portsmouth Boulevard, not far from East End Baptist Church there. So we also met with a huge stakeholder, Suffolk Redevelopment and Housing Authority, and got some insight into them. Full disclosure, when we initiated conversations with them, I had in my mind what I thought the Suffolk Redevelopment and Housing Authority did in, in the city of Suffolk and for the city of Suffolk. And they were quick to, to help me really realize what they do. I envisioned them being much more of a landlord, having a lot of units throughout the city, but in reality, they only are landlords for about 260 units throughout the city. And that includes the rebuild of the project off of White Marsh, I believe it's called Eagle Landing, that's, that's being redeveloped. That's just replacement of, of units that needed replacement. They are primarily in the business of distributing vouchers to those in need. So those are traditionally what you hear as Section 8 vouchers. And they have a waiting list of 4,000 applicants, and they only distribute about 1,000 of these a year. So they, they have the units where they are the landlord, but they are primarily in the business of working with private landlords on acceptance of the vouchers and getting folks vouchers who need them desperately. So 75% of the voucher applicants must be extremely low-income, below the 30% of median household income for the city. All of the applicants that receive vouchers through the Suffolk Redevelopment Housing Authority must be less than 40% of the income. So that, that's where I touched on Suffolk Redevelopment Housing Authority really works with those extremely low-income individuals primarily. I think those who develop low-income housing tax credit units, it's a more balanced approach. You have some units that are affordable to 80% of income. You have some that are affordable to 50%. Occasionally, you'll also have some market rate units in those, in there as well. And nothing prohibits, and, and usually, the developers of these low-income housing tax credit units also accept vouchers. So, but that, that's at the discretion of the developer.
Kevin, is, is the Suffolk Redevelopment Housing Authority, is that controlled by the city of Suffolk?
No, they're their own individual entity.
Who, who appoints their boards and, like their operating board? The city has nothing to do with that?
The city council appoints the commissioners. The commissioners hire their own executive to manage the property, but they serve as their own governmental entity, separate from the city, much like the EDA.
The city does appoint the?
Yes.
Okay.
Kevin, I have a question about that. Do they work directly with developers, with potential developers, the Redevelopment Housing Authority?
Through my conversation, once a developer is interested in developing one of these projects in the city of Suffolk, when I say these projects, a low-income housing tax credit project, they will engage conversations because generally, the Suffolk Redevelopment Housing Authority will present a letter of support for the project, which they will incorporate in their application to the state. No, that would come through the Suffolk, oh, well, the project eventually would come through the planning process, but at the onset, they would get a letter of support from the Suffolk Redevelopment Housing Authority. So I noted, we do have some active projects in the city of Suffolk. One is that project I noted on Portsmouth Boulevard. This is called Oak Terrace. I believe we have a site plan under review currently. This consists of 120 multifamily units. And an interesting caveat with these types of development, you'll notice that they're not big on one-bedrooms. Meanwhile, the private sector, the market rate units tend to be, have a higher proportion of one-bedroom units or sometimes studios. They're almost all two-bedroom and three-bedroom. Siri's talking to me, I'm sorry. So this project, 120 multifamily units, 72 of those are two-bedrooms, 48 are three-bedrooms. And, and that's because they, they're catering to the needs of families. We worked with them to utilize $500,000 of city community development block grant funding, which is funding we receive from HUD every year for the assistance in purchasing the property. Saratoga Place, which you may recall, there was a modification to a CUP, hmm, two years ago, I believe, for the Peanut Crossing Development on Saratoga, not far from here. They leveraged 76 of the units that were approved, of the 225 that were approved on site, and for the purpose of developing 76 units that are going to be affordable. 40 of those are two-bedrooms and 36 are three-bedrooms. Once again, we were able to leverage some of our community development block grant funding to assist with the purchase of the property, and that was $300,000 total. And then recently, you're all, are, you all are familiar with the Hillpoint Terrace Project. Applications were due to the state that third week of March. I'm not sure where they stand, but our hope is that it scores well and is competitive and, and receives those tax credits. So what's the role of the city as it relates to affordable housing? Right now, I would say, our role is to kind of actively inform developers of our existing bonus density provisions to make their development more achievable. We continue to provide assistance to, assistance to affordable housing projects, like those that I noted, in which we offered some of our grant funding for purchase assistance. We continue to stay informed on affordable housing trends and its impacts for Suffolk, and we're always looking for ways to explore additional funding considerations as, as it relates to, to new programs.
So purchases, this is strictly land?
Yes. That was for land acquisition.
Kevin.
Good.
As far as, I know in prior years, there's been grants for, for projects and, and of course, the Section 8, et cetera. Does the city have, is the planning department involved in researching and looking into grants for affordable housing? Or who in, in the city is in charge of, of keeping up with that? Because I know there's funds that come available from time to time. Do we have someone that, that, that is on top of something like that, that be sure we get our share of, of funding?
Yeah. And, and that is through primarily the CDBG program, that's the Community Development Black, Block Grant Program, and the Home Investment Partnership. So we receive around $1 million annually in federal funds, really for the purpose of making homes more affordable within our locality. And we have one position in our department that is solely, solely responsible for administering that program. And, and we're always actively looking for additional funding sources.
Kevin, question. Density bonus, big problem. Is it the same problem in all the other municipalities too? Or is our, is our verbiage the same or similar to other cities? Which, why is our density, density bonus problem such a problem? Why, why is the calculation the way it is? Why, why aren't the developers using it? I understand it's confusing, but why is it confusing?
I, I would say, and, and this is my opinion, that the density bonus, the sole issue or reason that it's not been taken advantage of is because it does not do enough to make these developments feasible. It's an important component, but it alone doesn't help developers achieve what they need to, to get there on the affordable front.
What can we do? Do we know?
I'm about, I'm about to talk about that.
I had a question about, so you've got 4,000, the Suffolk Redevelopment Housing Authority has 4,000 applicants waiting. And there's a protection of their privacy there, but is there data about the types of applicants so that developers can have some insight into what, I'm not saying they should build for these applicants, but like, the number of people in the family, like, the types of units that these people have applied for? Like, are they families? Are they single people applicants?
I'm, I'm sure they have that information.
So that is like a, okay.
Yeah.
Got it.
But I, I think the, the most telling part is, once again, in, if you're building a low-income housing tax credit unit, you, you saw the makeup of the units that were actually going to come online in the city of Suffolk. There are no one-bedrooms. So obviously, they're not tailoring necessarily to, you know, young professionals or something like that.
I was just thinking of like, say it's a single person, and it makes it even less affordable if the only thing available to them is a two-bedroom. So they, anyway.
Yeah. Understood. All right. So here's us kind of brainstorming in, in the planning department, and we, we'd love your feedback. Feel free to provide it today. If not, we, this won't be the last time we have this conversation. So, are, my first question that I asked the city council at the retreat was, you know, should affordable housing projects be incentivized in the city of Suffolk? We already tried to do that in a couple ways. We do allow city council to potentially waive development fees, should they be inclined. There's some complexities there on how to get there, and I can touch on that if, if y'all'd like to know. But the option here is to develop an incentive program for funding, to subsidize, subsidize development fees, such as tap fees, which are exorbitant. Or look at adequate public facility considerations a little differently for these types of development, should they go through the rezoning process. That would be looking at school impacts. That would be looking at traffic impacts, in, in which they're reviewed a little differently and/or some graces given considering the projects that, that we're looking at. So that is something we are considering, and, and we're engaging with city council and engaging with you all as well to get your feedback on approaches like that. Additionally, we asked them, should the city play a, a role in strategically acquiring property for the purpose of providing options for affordable housing? Because my takeaway from some of the conversations we had is, once again, these, the, the folks who dabble, and not dabble, it's, it's their development business, in the low-income housing tax credit world, are not competing against, by and large, the developers that you see come before you all, more often than not. And that, with that being said, the property is just not attainable for them sometimes. Certainly going through a rezoning process is a little more tenuous for them because of the challenges associated with it, because of the uncertainties a lot of times, but certainly because of the cost associated with going through that process. So we could actively acquire sites strategically located that would score well in Virginia's low-income housing tax credit process. Additionally, we could actively rezone property as the city for the purpose of accelerating and reserving for affordable housing development. Those are all things we're thinking about. It's a little outside the box, certainly an aggressive approach, but I think we have all the leverage in the world to utilize an aggressive approach, thanks to our language in the comp plan currently, and certainly what we're hearing through public participation in the current comp plan conversation, update conversations.
Question.
Yes, sir.
With the bonus density, the developers coming before us now, and they take this density, and they have to have affordable housing within that complex, how, where is the thin line with the affordability for the adequate public facilities with the schools? You know, a percentage, say, for example, 10 apartments in a, in a 100 unit, does that 10% take a 10% off of the affordable for their contribution toward the school system? Is that okay?
I want to make sure, and, and that question, I think, really encapsulates the complexity of all of this. So if, if I understood you correctly, are we penalizing developers? Are they having to mitigate for impacts to adequate public facilities based upon that density? But yes, that's one of the issues. We're saying, hey, welcome, have this increase in, in density. However, surprise, we have Section 31601 of the Unified Development Ordinance that says we cannot recommend approval of this, should you not mitigate impacts to adequate public facilities and/or maintain the level of service that exists currently. Welcome to the, the complexities of this issue. So, this is kind of one of the more compelling approaches that we've talked about internally as it relates to affordable housing. And I'll kind of set this... And I'll kind of set the table for you all, but we see mixed-use developments on occasion. The Point Harbor View is a good example. The Meridian and Obese project where the Aldi is, that was a mixed-use development project. The Godwin Park, which is somewhat under development, but behind where the Bojangles Taco Bell, just south of the Wawa and Godwin Boulevard, a large mixed-use development project. And what we're seeing is there are specified number of units within those developments. And if I'm not mistaken, 500 units in the Point Harbor View were approved, north of 700 for Godwin Park. What we would like to see as a part of those developments, or not even those types of developments, sometimes you're rezoning to an RU district, for instance, is a reservation of some units that would be affordable. And we could, how we get there is open for debate. Obviously, proffers in the Commonwealth are voluntary, so we would never tell someone they would have to do this. But what can we do to encourage some sort of reservation as a part of these market rate units? I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of good that can come from that, saying, okay, well, we're getting a nice mix of market rate and affordable dwelling units in what is envisioned as a planned development that residents of the city can enjoy. So there's a lot of, I'm really compelled by that approach, and we're looking forward to researching that a little bit more. And some of the ideas, I need a magnifying glass, was to create some sort of incentives for standard development projects for incorporating affordable units. And like I said, this could be MUD, this could be a density bonus available to those types of developers, waiver of development fees, and a relaxation on adequate public facility impacts as well. So we've kind of had those discussions, those are some of the items we're thinking about. And lastly, what role should the city play with affordable housing developers? And this really kind of sets the stage for us potentially having some sort of public-private We can, you know, work collectively in tandem to see an increase in affordable housing stock throughout the city. So those are some of our thoughts. This really just kind of scratched the surface today, but I did want to present you all with some information that gets the wheels turning a little bit. I know that we've had some really great discussions in the committee and ordinances on this topic, but I wanted to make sure the entire commission had a seat at the table for this. And with that being said, I can kind of throw it back to you, Mr. Chairman, for any questions we have from the commission on this.
Mr. Chairman, I'm jumping right in. I want to say this publicly, because many do not come to the ordinance meeting. And I want to thank the director, Mr. Wine, because Mr. Wine was not forced or suggested to do this. This is one of the things that, you know, in the ordinance committee, he kind of took on itself to kind of bring this conversation to bear. And I want to publicly thank you for doing this. I think it's, I would clap if I'm talking.
Sorry.
But no, but honestly, I really want to thank you for really doing this. I think it is important. So I guess my first question is, because you've been studying this much more detail than us, is affordable housing, is it really a problem in Suffolk in terms that you would call it a problem? I guess that's my first question. And my second question, I guess this is kind of for the attorney, because I know rezonings and things, there's kind of nuances, because everything comes down to five votes. So how much wiggle room does the appointed and elected offer, I mean, bodies having approving or disapproving application if it's not addressing the affordable housing issue? So I guess my first two questions. I don't know how that's, I know, I mean, this isn't just, like I said, if it was easy, it would be done. So it has to be some more nuances with it, so I don't know how to address it, so.
So it kind of depends on what ideas this body comes up with and presents to city council on what type of analysis we have to do, whether or not it's allowed. For rezonings, I don't think you could make a requirement that a rezoning has to be an affordable or have affordable dwelling units attached to it in order for it to be a rezoning, because that's not the standard for a rezoning. Whether or not you can attach some incentives for rezonings, you know, we have to research that and see what's allowed and what's not allowed. The code does not have a lot. The General Assembly hasn't really dealt with this themselves. And as you're aware, we are Dillon Rule State, so, you know, it doesn't matter what our good idea is, if they haven't come up with that a good idea, we can't do it. So it's just going to depend on what you want to do. And so I think first, you're going to have to brainstorm the ideas, and then we'll have to come back and tell you whether you can or can't do that.
Kevin, you had mentioned earlier, I think, about this as being kind of a niche-type thing for developers. The developers that we see, and I know the majority that you all see are not, they're really not interested in doing this type because they're interested in selling their product, okay, in the end, for the best price they can get. Now, it's being affected, I mean, we're in a rising rate environment, it's costing the developers more and more, we're seeing few, I don't know, we're seeing fewer and fewer developer, as we've seen in the last three or four months. Because of the rising rate environment, because of costs involved in it, they're having to pay people more, their material is costing more, so it's really slowed down, you know, their development of their product. Do we, I guess the question I have is, in your contacts with developers, with these niche developers, are there very many that are involved in doing this, involved in these programs like this with not only us, but other cities within the Hampton Roads area? Do you know?
I want to make sure I understand. The developers working with localities through, like, the rezoning process or just more broadly?
No, just the developers that are in business to be able to provide low-cost housing, for segments of our population here. Are there any like that? I mean, do you see any? Do you hear from any of these that are soliciting business of the city?
Yeah, so we have been in communication with a handful of them, of those developers, and generally, the developers that do this, do this only.
Right.
So, I mean, we've, we're in regular communication with probably a half dozen of these types of developers who are interested in being in the City of Suffolk. And one of them that I know that has done multiple projects in the City of Suffolk or hopes to do multiple projects at server development, they're in Virginia, but they've taken a keen interest in Suffolk. The Lawson Companies, too, out of Virginia Beach, they're interested in doing business here. If I'm not mistaken, it's either Ryan Holmes or HH Hunt does have a division that does this type of business. So, yeah, that's just an example of some of the folks that we've been engaged with, who are asking questions about property at the city, that have an interest in really executing an affordable deal.
I guess, would we have people or landowners in the city that would be interested in selling their property at a price that would be, I guess, competitive? I mean, it really comes down to the present landowner as to how much they would sell their properties for, for this purpose, not to the usual developers who are, you know, interested in larger plots and selling it to anybody, condos and things like that.
In a state like Virginia, which is very property rights friendly, that that creates one of the grander questions or debates. And it's kind of why we've proposed, not proposed necessarily, but asked for some feedback on what should the city's participation be? Because if the city is the city, we do have buy-in power. Once we buy it, then we kind of make that call.
And I think this came up at the ordinance committee meeting when we were discussing affordable housing. But in looking at this for our city, there are other cities, probably in Virginia and North Carolina and other places, that have successful affordable housing programs. And they probably have done a lot of the things that we're looking at trying to do. So have we made some inquiries? I guess, is there anywhere that you can find cities or towns that have done successful programs? And how did they, I guess, how did they put their program together to encourage developers to come in and develop affordable housing?
Yeah, that's, you know, Planning 101, part of our toolbox, is who's done it already? And how can we make that fit what we want to do here? I do, if I recall, I believe the City of Norfolk last year did lobby for some changes to state code as it relates to one's ability to do some creative stuff with affordable housing, if I'm not mistaken. And I don't believe that got across the finish line. But, yeah, we're not the only community trying to figure this one out. And in fact, we have at least seven peer localities in the region that we can look to to see how they've tried to skin this cat. So, yeah, we're constantly looking. I think, from my mindset, we kind of want to set the table, get us thinking about it in a right direction, engage interest, because the worst thing you can do is put something that you feel is really great together and it just kind of sit on the shelf forever. So we want to make sure that we have the buy-in before we start doing a full blitz on solving this issue.
That's what I want to say. Something else. In Norfolk State of the Union, I read in the Virginia Pallet, they were speaking about how Norfolk has such a diversity housing stock, so they had a lot of options. The truth of the matter is, you have a tough time in regards to community support for any kind of housing that's really not detached. You know, that's when, you know, the communities get a little more concerned, for lack of a better term. So Suffolk doesn't really have that many, I mean, we're increasing, but what I'm saying is, a lot of times when we get rezoning applications, we don't get anything, what people really like us, single-family detached homes. The interesting, you know, as we was going through this presentation, I never really thought about, you know, the difference between affordable housing with being renting and owning. Because always, when I hear affordable housing, I always think about people trying to own homes. I never really thought about, I never really thought about it in terms of renting. I thought the whole point of trying to get affordable housing is to help people own. And so, you know, just listening to the narrative just made me say, well, again, I'm in my own bubble, and it's a much larger conversation. And so, I see all that, to say, you know, to have people who specialize in this to do it compared to people who are just building already in the city, that's trying to open up some housing within something that's already, like, I guess, for lack of a better term, you know, it's just, you know, how do you take away the stigma? And now we talked about it, you know, in the ordinance committee, but that's really what this really comes down to, is when you put affordable and housing together in two words side by side, that's when you get the resistance. And, you know, I just, I guess the overall thing I'm saying is, how do we change the culture here that, you know, this is something that we take serious and that we want to support? And I guess that's really the overall conversation here, is we really have to change the stigma. Because this whole concept is stigmatized, and that's why the communities do not want it, that's why when people see this coming in, they do not want it, because it's a stigma to it. And we're going to have a serious conversation within the city, because, you know, you saw as assessments are going up, historical communities where people who are typically, I think, that's something you touched on before, affordable housing in Suffolk is basically old housing that people are living in, that's held together by, you know, wing and a prayer. Well, if you look at a lot of our older communities, infield development is raising assessments in a lot of these older communities. And we may look one day and have a serious problem, because people, the rents are going to have to go up, people who are owning, taxes are going to go up, and we may have a serious shift in the next couple of years. So it's not just something, it's people over there, it could be a much serious, much more serious problem. So, again, I want to unclosen on this point, I want to thank you for having the gumption to at least try to have this conversation. And I hope that we're all able to find a way with all the stakeholders, including the community, of seeing what can we do? Because we're going to have to do some kind of multiple use, and just because it says apartment, we just can't just say no. And I'm going to leave it at that.
I'd like to second the motion with Commissioner Edwards said. Norfolk has a problem with affordable housing. Where I go to church on Sunday mornings, there was Tower Water Gardens, they leveled that, and they're coming back, and there's a big discussion about the affordability part of that. But I'm glad you put on the table, and I'm sorry, the young man, Mr. Robertson, I think his name is, with the Suffolk News Herald, that does a very good job of reporting, at least probably at the state of the city, trying to get that together. But, you know, the public needs to hear this, what this discussion we had today. Because as a misconception, as Commissioner Edwards stated, when they look at a price of a house in a development, they equate that to affordability. And affordable housing, it's a different picture, it's a different animal. And at least it's on the table now, we're talking about it, and hopefully, they're watching this and they hear, and will change their perception. And thanks again also.
Kevin, just one question. Has there been a consideration of putting together HRH, was it SRHA people, a couple of them, and the affordable developers and part of your team, and all sitting together to brainstorm? Because they're...
Yeah, that was kind of the goal of those meetings we had. I mean, we had stakeholder meetings with the developers, it was me and some members of our staff on the city end, and just kind of polled them on a lot of these same questions. We also did the same meeting with Suffolk Redevelopment Housing Authority to kind of get an idea of what were some of the challenges, because we can't begin to solve the issue if we don't know what the impediment is. And, yeah, that was the basis of the conversation. I want to say that those meetings probably happened well over a year ago now, and here we are. But, yeah, they're vital to the conversation.
I'd also throw in maybe considering some rental management companies, and I'm just using my brokerage as an example, Cross Realty, we have folks that are in sales, agents, and then they also manage a lot of properties. And I think, just from what I hear, especially through COVID with the, just a lot of the kickouts and things that were regulated, that might be another group, rental management, that could provide some insight on some of the struggles. Just a thought.
Yeah, thank you. I'm jumping back in. I feel like James Brown, real quick, I can't think back. My question to you is, are we talking about, I guess, where we're doing this, and you're thinking, are we limited to the growth zone? Or would the city have more flexibility to kind of skate on some of the edges?
Of the growth boundaries of the city? Right now, that's not necessarily a straightforward question, because there's so many variables there. If we're approached for a rezoning for one of these outside of the growth boundaries, yeah, we're limited. yeah, we're limited by the growth boundary. And we'll see where we land with the comprehensive plan update, and whether that's a consideration to explore some opportunities outside the boundary if there are exceptional circumstances. However, we have growth boundaries for a reason. We fully envision this type of development happening within those growth boundaries because of the services available. We do have some areas outside of our growth boundaries that are zoned VC, that's our village center districts, which would allow for kind of a more innovative use. But I should stipulate, there are some challenges as it relates to services in those areas, particularly water and sewer availability, that makes multifamily development and/or denser development a challenge.
Sure, sure. Can't come to Holland. We got water, we got sewer. We have any more questions on the affordable housing before we move to the next item?
A million questions, just don't know which ones to ask.
Take a stab at one of them?
No.
Okay.
Make my head hurt.
We're going to move to the status report for the City Council meeting from April 19.
All right. I feel like I'm about to read you all a book, so bear with me. So April 19, the following items went before City Council. The Lake Kilby Shores rezoning, that's request RZN 2021-0018, that was tabled until their meeting in August, August 16 specifically. There was a rezoning request for Pinnacle Storage, that was the storage unit facility that is at the corner of Shoulders Hill and Pewsville. That was a rezoning from RL to B2 General Commercial that would pave the way for a conditional use permit later in the evening. That was denied, and ultimately, with that denial, no action was required on that conditional use permit, because you couldn't get a conditional use permit in the RL zoning district for a commercial storage building. Conditional use permit request CUP 2022-031, that was for the dog kennel, the commercial dog kennel on Jenkins Mill Road, that was approved with the staff recommended conditions. The Holland Substation CUP, the Holland Substation Expansion, CUP 2023-005, that was approved with conditions, it's on Dutch Road. Constance North Park Expansion, that was the boardwalk, that's on North Main Street, just across from the Hilton Garden Inn, across the Ansem River, rather, that was approved with conditions. There was an ordinance text amendment related to parks, really, in Conservation Zoning District and the Impervious Cover, that was approved. And that text amendment, it was a long-awaited text amendment, y'all saw this quite some time ago, but related to clarifications for our minor subdivision process, that was approved at their meeting. So I was really busy that night, we were here for quite a while, but that is the summary.
Got no preliminary plats. Commissioners, any comments?
Commissioner Edwards, real quick, one of Commissioner Hicks and me, questions popped in my head, so I'm going to ask Kevin one more time before we close. Do you all have conversations with the civic leagues and the community groups in conjunction to affordable housing? Because, again, you know, a lot of times it's the communities that come and say they don't want something, but do we have, like, real serious conversations on what are their real problems and concerns before something like this comes their way? So, I say this, you get kind of a feel of which areas would be more acceptable based on what's being said than others?
That's a great point, and at this point, we've not engaged civic groups. I think it's probably a little premature for that discussion. I think, and this is just going, and I don't want to belabor the point too much, but I've been at this for, shoot, nearly 20 years. And you touched on something earlier that I think struck a chord a little bit, because it's true. But in every locality I've worked, it seems that the word multifamily has a negative connotation, regardless of whether it's affordable or not. I've sat through many public hearings where folks are arguing in opposition to a market-rate multifamily project because they are assuming it's affordable, or low income, or Section 8 housing, and they're not mutually exclusive. However, I think in the last couple of years in particular, I've seen that same sentiment die down a little bit. And the reason I say that is with the Hillpoint rezoning, you have an established community of nearly 1,800 units. Someone was requesting a rezoning of a commercial piece for 75 units, and I don't recall anyone speaking in opposition, at least as it relates to the product type. And 10 years ago, that would have been unheard of. So I think, I think the public in general's come around a little bit more on it, but that's a great point. I think, once we kind of lock down the direction we're going to go with this, sending some feelers out to the community and having maybe some community listening sessions on this issue would be a vital part of the process.
Thank you, that's my comments.
You sure now? Okay. Any other comments from the commissioners? If not, we stand adjourned.
We can't adjourn yet. Before you adjourn. I would just like to say, I attended a grand opening of the Recreation, new Recreation Building, took the place of the Army Reserve Center in Bennett's Creek, and it was a great, great function. We had everybody from the city mayor, city staff, and everybody was there. It's a wonderful location, great, something that's really been needed in that area, because there was no building or anything like that that you could go to. But I guess the contractor that did all this, they had to rehab that entire building. It cost a lot of money for the city to do this, but I think they'll get it back in spades. And it's right off of, you know, right off of Bennett's Creek, what is it, Shoulders Hill Road, and between the school, library, you know, and all that. So it's just a really nice facility, and it will compete favorably, I think, with the YMCA's and all of that, because they've got a lot of equipment, a lot of equipment, they have plans, you know, for a pool and all that, money available. But it's a nice facility, so if you get out that way, it's worth a trip. That's all I have, thank you. You can adjourn now, sir.
No second guesses? Or stand adjourned?